All right, the time is 5:30, so I'm going to call the Committee of Hall for March 10, 2025 to order. Clerk Boeck, could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Pali Vanoglu?
Present.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Seven members present.
And Brian texted us, and he will be a little bit late. Next, we are on to the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the February 24, 2025 minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing, none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. You have up to three minutes. If anyone is here from the public and would like to speak, you can come up to the podium. Please state your name for the record. I don't see anybody from the public. Okay? We are going to move on to Item 5, Discussion/Action. B, Resolution to Set a Hearing for the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate Transfer from Ultium Cells LLC to LG Energy Solutions Michigan, Inc., at 8100 Davis Highway. Looks like we got Carl here. If you could make sure the green light is on on your microphone.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Carl Dorshimer with the Lansing EDC, and I have with me, I have Lisa Niskaroni, and she's Director of External Affairs and Government Relations for LG Energy Solutions. And we are here today to present to you a project and also ask for certain items. And before I get into that, I'd like to give you kind of a little brief history of why we're here and how we got here and what we're asking for. So in early 2020s, General Motors formed a joint venture with LG Energy Solutions, a Korean company, and the name of that joint venture was Ultium Cells LLC, and the intent was to produce batteries for General Motors electric vehicles. And LG is a, you know, a worldwide international company out of Korea, but they also have a North American headquarters in Troy. And so this joint venture, they came together and the intent was to construct three large battery plants in the United States to meet the demand, the anticipated demand for batteries for General Motors electric vehicles. One was to be built in Lordstown, Ohio, one in Spring Hill, Tennessee, and one here in Lansing, Michigan. So in 2021, Ultium Cells LLC and General Motors, they approached the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and the city of Lansing and the Lansing EDC and requested assistance in building a $2.5 billion battery plant in the 425 area, which is an agreement between Delta Township and the city of Lansing on the west side where the Lansing Delta Township LDT Assembly Plant is. And so we went through a process, and ultimately, the Ultium was granted a renewable energy Renaissance Zone by the Michigan Strategic Fund or MEDC. And also, they were granted what is called an Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate, and this is granted by the Michigan Tax Commission on both these, you know, with the essentially support of the local community, meaning City of Lansing and the councilmembers. And so these incentives, the Renaissance Zone was for 18 years and began in 2022, and it abated 100% of 65 mills in the area. And you've got to understand, too, because it's a 425 area, there's some Lansing taxes and there's some county taxes, and so it's kind of a mixture of millage. But it abates 65 mills. And then the IFE certificate, it abates 50% of 6.7 mills, and these were mills that were not covered by the Renaissance Zone that was granted by the state of Michigan. And at the time, Ultium and GM, you know, wanted it all, so they applied for that. And in particular, what's interesting about the IFE certificate is that it's really that 6.7 mills that it abates 50% of. It's composed of Grand ledge School District, Grand ledge School Sinking Fund, and then also Carrier Creek Drainage District, which is out in Eaton County. So construction started in early 2022 after the incentives were granted, and it's very near completion. And I don't know if the clerk was able to get the photo into your packet in time, but it's, for most folks that go by on 96, you don't see anything other than, you see the Lansing Delta Township Plant, which is big in itself, but beyond it to the west is this plant, and it's 2.5 million square feet. It's gigantic, and it's almost complete. And they're at the point, and I'll let Lisa explain to you kind of where they are and what they're going to do out there. But it's a pretty impressive plant. It's very large, and hopefully you got a chance to see that picture. And then, so we had the two incentives, the Ren Zone and the IFE certificate, and construction began, and then it was very close to being complete. But however, late last year, in 2024, GM entered into an agreement to sell its stake in the Ultium Lansing Plant and sell it to an entity that was formed by LG Energy Solutions, and it's LG Energy Solutions Michigan Incorporated. So they approached the city and the EDC and the state and said they were selling this, and this was in the news, and they announced it. Also, this transaction is expected to close in the end of this month, the end of the first quarter. And in addition to that, and it's not uncommon for incentives granted by the state and by the city to, when there's a change in ownership, it's essentially assigned or transferred to the new owner or operator. And so as a part of the sales agreement, and GM and Ultium Cells approached the city along with LG Energy Solutions and requested that they would like to see those two incentives, the Renaissance Zone and the IFE certificate transferred to the new entity, the new owners essentially. So with that, we've started the process, and, you know, LG Energy Solutions is seeking city council's approval. Ultimately, not tonight. Tonight, the request is more to set a hearing for two weeks from now, but ultimately, there's two resolutions on the 24th that we hope will be considered, which one essentially supports the MSF MEDC to transfer the Renaissance Zone to the new owners. It's the same zone, same time. It just flips over to them essentially. And the other is to the request of the state of Michigan, the Michigan Tax Commission to basically transfer the IFE to. So, but before I get into the details about that and what that process is and, you know, what the Ren Zone and the IFT mean in terms of tax abatement, I'd like to allow Lisa the opportunity to present to you a little bit about in terms of, you know, who the company is, you know, what the current project status is and what their plans for the Lansing Plant are. So Lisa?
Thanks very much, Carl. And thank you, I'd like to thank the entire council for making time for us to share these updates tonight. So, and Carl did an excellent introduction to the company. LG Energy Solutions is based in Seoul, South Korea, and decades of expertise in high voltage battery production as well as electrochemical expertise. And it's because of that that we came together with GM to form that industry-leading joint venture. And as was announced late last year, GM had determined that they could meet the required demand through the two plants that had been announced and constructed earlier before the Lansing facility. And so we saw an amazing opportunity. And that opportunity is only here because back at the end of 2021, in addition to the state of Michigan and the other local communities, this council came together right around the holidays, and several members are actually still up there. And that is what made this amazing building, what made it come into existence. And so again, I hope that there, at a future time, you'll be able to see it and experience it yourself. But again, wanted to thank you for the forethought and the way that the state and local communities came together to set this into motion. So now at this point, we look forward to, again, hopefully in the very near future, acquiring the assets as well as the property at that site and moving forward, being the owner and operator of the facility. And what's really exciting about that is not only does that, do we look forward to continuing to honor the commitments that were set forth to the state and the community, our employers, employees, and other stakeholders and customers, but also an opportunity to position the plant for a lot more flexibility. Because when you put up a joint venture plant, it's an agreement between the company and the supplier, and you're confined to that agreement. And now as a solely owned and operated site for LG Energy Solutions, not only do we have the opportunity to diversify the customers we serve out of that site, but also the products. And so the high voltage battery expertise that LG Energy Solutions has is yes, of course, for EV batteries, which is industry-leading and such an exciting opportunity, you know, for the community, but also for stationary energy storage purposes is what we looked at, look at the redundancy and stability of the electrical grid, as well as for other devices, smaller devices, and all the things that you see powered with batteries these days. And so that's an incredible opportunity that was not even part of the conversation in 2021. So we're excited about that. And I think finally, as you know, it's becoming more and more important to secure US-based manufacturing, the production of critical technology, as well as the supply chains that support it. And so we're thrilled to carry on and continue to have the Lansing Battery Cell Plant be part of that equation.
All right, do we have any questions? Councilman Garza?
Thank you, President Cost. Good evening. Thanks for being here today. Couple of questions regarding the transfer of the Renaissance Zone, the tax credits. Is this contingent on the sale from you purchasing it from GM?
Actually, I would qualify it as the sale is contingent upon securing the incentive programs because it's contemplated as part of the transaction.
Okay. And what is your commitment to hiring the local workforce here? Because I do have some concerns in the Holland area, the Holland LG Plant. I'm well aware of a lot of undocumented workers coming from South Korea, taking jobs of their local workforce. And I'm just wondering, is that happening here? Is the same plan happening, going to happen here in Lansing?
Well, so we already, by the, around the end of last year, the end of 2025, had about 1,000 skilled trades construction workers on site. There are elements of the construction process, specifically the installation of highly specialized equipment that includes installation labor with it. It's a package when you purchase the equipment from overseas, but that's a temporary and a very specific role and is not undertaken by folks that would, it's not taking positions that would be able to be sourced locally. So in terms of the recruitment process, we are going to carry on a lot of the good work that was done through Ultium Cells with local partners, through the Capital Area Michigan Works LEAP, the MEDC's talent attraction team, as well as LCC and MSU and their EV Scholars Program. And so we, and it's noted in the document, are making best efforts to source the maximum number of jobs for the local community to source talent for those. And we'll note that our target wages will be quite a bit higher than even was originally shared at the inception of this project. And so we're excited about that piece as well and the economic benefits to the community, to the larger communities.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here. So I can only assume by the timing that GM kind of backed out because the new federal administration pushed hard against electric vehicles and is pushing hard against renewable energy, battery, and all that stuff. My question is, is if you take over, even with the same terms, but this current federal administration, do you anticipate any problems with compliance or any type of pushback that would account for some adjustment in your operations here in Lansing area?
I appreciate that question. And in terms of, again, I guess, going back to the diversification of the products, I think that's the leading opportunity here, and that is because you're not necessarily reacting to industry fluctuations like we're seeing in the EV space and automotive, and especially as policies shift. And so the stationary energy storage product portfolio, we don't expect a substantial change in demand for that because, again, it's not, it's a market not driven by incentives or policy in that way. It's a, there's high demand, given the increasing pressure on grids and even power that is sourced from renewable sources that are already established. And so those are ways to add resilience and redundancy to those. And candidly, on the EV market, while there, again, are some fluctuations, it's actually still growing, not, just not at the pace that was originally expected, again, given the policies of the prior administration. But even from a global perspective, and certainly here in the US market, it's still growing, and we expect that to be the trend for years to come, and could even, the pace could even quicken.
All right, I have Councilman Hussein.
Yeah, Carl, so my understanding is we're in a set of show cause here, Arab, I'm sorry, a hearing for the 24th, and then I would assume later that night, you guys are asking for consideration. Is that correct? That's correct. Okay. So that night, I'm going to want to, I remember 2021, and I remember it was really a three-step process, right? And so we first extended the tax sharing agreement with Delta Township. I think that was to 2046. We then made the recommendation to the MS, sorry, should say the Strategic Fund for the Renaissance Zone, and then the IFT was the last piece of it. But I also remember, I think we even scheduled a special meeting there to do this. But in any event, I remember every step of the way, there were promises made, right? Because we knew what type of tax capture this was going to result in. And so there were a lot of promises with regard to temporary construction jobs, local workforce hiring, there was going to be, you know, so much economic impact, and then there was going to be a certain amount of FTE in perpetuity. And so I would love to know how that shook out, at least the temporary piece up to this point. It sounds like you guys are pretty much done with construction. Maybe you're tooling, I would assume, and getting ready to actually hire and start production. So I would like to know what we are promised and where we're at. And then moving forward, is there any reduction in workforce? I think at one point, it was discussed that there was going to be some 1,700 full-time employees on site. So where are we at with that? We did have an average wage that was presented. You're saying it's going to be quite a bit more than that, substantially more than that? I'd like to know what that is. And then Carl, I think a question you could probably answer tonight. Over the 12- and 18-year windows respectively, since we are, you've got 65 mills and 6.7 mills, is this, what is the city of Lansing bringing in in terms of tax capture? Is there anything?
There is. I can go over that.
Please do.
But before I get to that.
Yeah.
So those commitments were essentially codified in a development agreement.
Yep.
That was approved, you know, and it was basically signed by Ultium and GM, this exact same agreement with no change to it, other than now it has the LG Energy Solutions as the party who's signing it, and it's in your packet. And they have signed both the assignment document and then also the development agreement. So it makes the exact same commitments, and in here, that does have a section committed to local hire, and that's language that I believe the city attorney took out of the UDA. So there's, they are meeting, you know, they are pledging to meet all the same commitments that were made the first time around. And in terms of jobs on this agreement, it says 1,000. I believe, though, that there was talk of up to 1,800. But so I leave that to Lisa to kind of give a better idea of where they think it's going to be. But in terms of this particular agreement, it says 1,000, and it's the same commitment that was made by General Motors and Ultium at the time.
And then I guess the batteries that are being, that are going to be built there, is it going to be for General Motors cars?
Our plan currently is to supply General Motors through the existing plants in Ohio and Tennessee, though there's certainly an opportunity, again, with it being our solely-owned facility, to produce cells for General Motors as well in the future.
So what brand are we going to be producing from this one?
We do expect a substantial portion of the capacity to supply a very well-known global OEM, and I'm not in a position to announce what that is at this time, but we expect in the future to be able to share that information, as well as a diverse slate of customers to be supplied out of Lansing.
And then when it comes to the workforce, General Motors had agreed before they sold this to unionize that workforce. Will this workforce be unionized?
So I am not in a position to speculate as to the goals and preferences of a future workforce. However, we unequivocally respect the rights and processes associated with that to take place as the workforce teams fit. So.
And then you had mentioned significantly more pay than they would have gotten at the beginning of this deal, but I believe that there was a pay raise in the last UAW contract that was signed, and I realize this is no longer UAW. Is it going to match the wages that that was going to create?
So while I can't speak on behalf of GM or Ultium Cells, I will say that the Ultium Cells plants in the other states were both initiated their own local negotiations and agreement process. And so I don't know that there was a wage tied to an organized labor agreement in advance four years ago before this plant even existed. So I apologize for not being able to speak to that number specifically.
All right. I appreciate that, Lisa. Do you know, I have an idea what the name is for the car company that's going to be producing, you're going to be producing batteries for. Do you know if they have any intention of ever building an assembly plant here in the future?
I'm not, I apologize for not being knowledgeable of our customers' production footprint plans. But our hope is that there will be, again, indirect investments as a result of our continued work there.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Vice President? I'm sorry. Councilman Jackson?
Would a product made here but with a South Korean owner, would it have a tariff to go anywhere based on any of these new tariffs, or just because it's battery or related to electric vehicles somehow?
So the products manufactured within the US are currently not a target of tariffs, from my understanding.
All right. Vice President Carter?
Yes. So I would motion to set a public hearing for the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate Transfer for Ultium Cells LLC to LG Energy Solutions Michigan, Inc., at 8100 Davis Highway with the setting of the public hearing for March 24th.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing, none. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. All right. We are going to move down to Item C, which I'm guessing you're both staying around for. That is the Resolution for the Renaissance Zone Transfer from Ultium Cells LLC to LG Energy Solutions, Inc., at 8100 Davis Highway. And I believe Law had an interjection here before we move forward.
Yes. 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 There we go. Yeah, the answer's yes. No. There is a, and I will let Lisa speak to this, but as part of the request for a resolution in support of transferring the Renaissance Zone agreement from, between the two entities, there's also a modification to the legal description for the property that is within the Renaissance Zone. I think this was one of the things that they figured out in interacting with MEDC and Michigan Strategic Fund, but it's actually a slightly smaller amount of land, and I need to update, I have that legal description now, so we will need to update the resolution because the legal description, the old legal description is what is in the resolution, and we would just need to put the new one in there. So that's just a technical thing, but that's for all of you to be aware of, and I'll let Lisa and Carl describe the details.
All right, the floor is yours. So as far as, I did mention the Ren Zone and the IFE, or the two incentives that we're asking to be essentially transferred. Project's the same. I can go over, and I know Councilmember Hussein wanted to know a little bit more about like the numbers. So I have a brief summary. I can go over the numbers right now if you'd like to, in terms of what it means in terms of tax savings to the company, but then also in terms of revenue to the city.
Did you want to speak to the legal? I just, I want to make sure that I think what the city attorney was presenting is that there are about 1,000 acres that were contemplated as part of the Ren Zone originally. But the current facility is only on about half of that, and so the revised legal description and the revised boundaries for these incentives will only apply to the 500, give or take acres that will be for the LG Energy Solutions Battery Cell Plant.
So as far as the Renaissance Zone, there is a development agreement, but that development agreement, because it's a state incentive, is between the company and the Michigan Strategic Fund, and it basically is being edited to reflect the new owner. By my understanding, the commitments are the same as before. And in fact, the development agreement that's in your packet for the IFE basically is linked to that Renaissance Zone agreement, because the default on that Renaissance agreement at the state level is also going to be a default on this agreement, too. So it's all the very same commitments and all the same teeth that was in the original agreement, and they're assuming all of those responsibilities and commitments. And regarding the And regarding the Renaissance Zone and the, the tax abatement, so basically, as I said before, the Renaissance Zone exempts approximately 65 mills, which, you know, this, that's the biggest incentive by far when you compare the two. And the property tax savings to LG Energy Solution by the Ren Zone are estimated to be about $6.5 million per year, and that's because, you know, we're talking a huge investment here, too, and it, over an 18-year period, which is, we've already gone through two years of that. And the Ren Zone, now, when you look at it a little closer, the Ren Zone, the City of Lansing property taxes are exempted 100% by the Renaissance Zone, but however, you know, it only represents, of that 6.5 per year that's being exempted, about 1.8 are city taxes, so 1.8 million. And then it gets a little more complicated, is because those city taxes are split 50/50 with the township. So likewise, the costs, the opportunity cost is split. So you have 1.8 million of city taxes that are being exempted by the Renaissance Zone, but when you look at it, the true, true cost to the city, it's half of that, so it's 900,000 per year. So, you know, of the 6.5 million in taxes that are being exempted, roughly about 900,000 of that represents an opportunity cost to the City of Lansing. But you could also argue without the tax, without the tax abatement, the project wouldn't take place, but to just follow it all the way through and say, okay, it's an opportunity cost, what is this costing the city, then it's 900,000 a year in property taxes. And then when you look at the IFE, because it abates 50% of the 6.7 mills, well, those are not City of Lansing taxes. So really, abating those, it doesn't affect the city's budget, so there is not an opportunity cost there. It does affect the Grand LED Schools and the Eaton County Drain Commission, but not the city. So overall, you have that 900,000 per year, and the company is saving 6.5. And then if you look at it even further in terms of, so there's, there are going to be income taxes, right? And so we, we estimated, we took a low number, and it's about 55,000 per year, average wage. I think it's higher than that, and we'll have that number for you, and if so, I can reflect in these numbers when we come back. So that, but that ends up being approximately about, you know, $22 million in income taxes, city income taxes, over the 18 years of the Renaissance Zone. So that ends up being, if you take that and split that in half, because the 425 agreement said all city income tax collected is going to be split 50/50, so, so roughly half of that, so 9 million of that would have gone to the city, but instead, well, it, it does go to the city, I'm sorry, the 22 is being split, so 9 million of it goes to the city. And that, that, over the life of the 18 years, that's roughly about 600,000 annually. So you got the 900,000 in the tax saving, and then you have the 600,000 in income coming in. So there's a net difference there of about 300,000 per year, if you look at it in terms of what's costing the city in terms of taxes versus the income tax. Now, there's other benefits that come in as a part of this project, right? It's not looking at all the impact benefits, and a large percentage of people working there will probably live in the city, and they'll spend their money, and there'll be all, there'll be secondary impacts. Also, they're a large user of electricity, so because the city basically has an agreement with the Board of Water and Light that a certain percent, I believe it's 5% of the revenue coming in then is a payment to the city, so I talked with them, it's hard to estimate exactly, but that can be as, as much as a couple of million per year. So, you know, I'm just looking at the pure tax aspects, but when you start to look at the bigger picture, you see that, you know, really, the, the cost to the city, you know, of 300,000 a year in net revenue versus the benefits, you know, I, I would argue the benefits are much higher than that 300,000, but it just, it gives you a perspective in terms of, if you look at the overall incentive, you say, this is a very large incentive, it's a very large investment, and it's a lot of jobs. But then, because you're the city council, it's like, well, what does this mean to me in terms of city taxes? And my take on, from looking at it, is your portion of it is fairly small, and the benefits are, are pretty large, and so I think it's a good deal for the city. So that's the analysis. If the wages are higher, even better, so, and I'm using, you know, lower estimates for everything, too. Everything's conservative, so there may be additional development, there's room for additional development out there, too. So that's, those are the basic numbers. Obviously, it gets more complicated than that, but that's my basic overall review of the numbers in terms of the fiscal impact of the city.
And Carl, you said 22 million over 18 years?
Yes.
Okay. So is it 9 million or 11 million, the city's half?
City's is 9.
Is there, is there a reason why we're getting less?
No, I'm dividing 22 by 18. I wonder if I got that wrong.
I think it's, it's 11 million.
11 million, so it's even more.
Yeah.
So it'd be around, around 10 million. Or an average of roughly about 6.5, so thank you for noticing that.
Do we have any questions on this? Okay. Seeing none. Vice President Carter.
All right. I will motion this resolution, move this resolution for the Renaissance Zone transfer from Ultium Cells LLC to LG Energy Solutions, Inc., Michigan, Inc. at 8100 Davis Highway with the modified revisions that will be provided from OCA, and it will be corrected by the March 24th meeting.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. All right. We appreciate both of you coming today.
Now, do we need to stay for the next meeting?
No. Nope. This is just for setting the hearing, so the hearing will be the 24th.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you. We're going to move on to item D, which is a resolution to set a hearing for revocation of CDDM Corporation 5910 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Lansing, Michigan, a cabaret license revocation and liquor license revocation. And I don't think we have anyone here to speak on it, so I will. Law. Yeah. We're going to pass it to Law.
Might work. Oh, it's working now. So this is a resolution that was requested from the council after there was a shooting death at Centerfolds here in Lansing. CDDM is the nominal operator license holders, or license holder for cabaret license and liquor license. This is pursuant to our ordinance. We have provisions in our ordinances both for revocation of cabaret licenses and revocation of liquor licenses, and this essentially follows the process set forth in our ordinances. On that, it sets a, a hearing. It's not a public hearing in front of the full council, the way that we normally think of that. It's a, a hearing in front of a hearing officer to essentially take evidence from the city, which is generally represented by our office, and then there's a hearing officer that's appointed from within the city but is independent from that, and then there, the respondent, CDDM, has the opportunity to show up and present their evidence, and then, so, so this is just the resolution to set both of those hearings, or set those processes in motion. There's one hearing, it'll hear both matters, and it appoints a hearing officer. So that's what this is, and then at the conclusion of that, a report is compiled, transcript has to be created first, and then a report is compiled, and then it comes back to this council, and then you all have the opportunity to determine whether you'd like to advance a resolution that actually revokes either of those licenses.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions on this resolution? Councilwoman Pelle Vanaglu, followed by Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just a very brief question. The hearing that would be set, I understand it will not be here, but is it a public meeting, and will that information be published so that the community is aware of that?
Yes. So the resolution actually sets both the date and location, date, time and location of the hearing. It is open to the public in the way that a court would be open to the public, but it is not necessarily, again, it's not public in the way that our public, council public hearings are public, it's not broadcast sort of separately or independently. What happens there is required by our ordinance to be taken down under transcript, so a court reporter is there taking everything down, that's a public document, and then once the report is created and everything, that's all, those are all turned over to the council, so it's fully public at that point.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson.
Just two things. One is, is there anybody from the defendant or establishment represented? I mean, have you heard, have they been in contact with you all?
We, we have not. The first step really is to send this notice to their address, their corporate address, and then, I will say, in the past, the city has taken similar actions to this. Most often, someone shows up, an attorney representing them. I know that there was an instance where no one showed up, but most often, someone does show up.
I just think that's, I mean, we, I heard about this, you know, in the news, and so it's already been contemplated. It's some surprise that either we didn't reach out or someone didn't reach out. And also, who appoints the hearing officer, again?
This council in this resolution.
Do we know who we're appointing?
Yeah. I'll let Council President.
It's Raleigh Van Fossen. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Councilman Hussein.
Just because of those two questions, I think it's important to note, if you look in the resolution, it does state that the meeting is the, at 1:00 PM, March 25th, City Clerk, or I'm sorry, City Clerk's Conference Room, and then it does, because it, I, I just think it's important to note that we, as council, we are actually setting the hearing, we are actually by resolution, we are actually appointing the hearing officer, and in this case, his name is outlined in the resolution, being Raleigh Van Fossen, so those things are in the resolution. Thanks, sir.
I'm going to get Councilman Spatafor first, and then we'll come back to you.
In the interest of making sure that the resolution is accurate, it does say the City Clerk's 0th floor conference room. It's been corrected. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that. All right. Councilman Jackson.
I just appreciate the whole process. It just seems hard, and I remember from last time, like, for example, Raleigh Van Fossen, city employee, I know it has to be within the city or appoint, I don't know if it has to be within the city or not, but he's a department head. I don't know. I mean, he, it's like a city interest, it's the police department head, Raleigh Van Fossen department head, the administration department head, all, you know, every Monday or whenever they meet, it's like, it's the same. So it's going to be whatever the city wants it to be. Not that it, it just takes from, in my opinion, it takes from the validity of what would come out, could even be the same result. And I just remember that last time a little bit, and it's just reminded me again this time, so I'm sorry I wasn't part of picking somebody, but I probably would have picked a department head or someone very closely tied with Team Lansing. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, Vice President Carter.
Yes. I'll make a motion to set the hearing for revocation for CDDM Corporation 5910 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Lansing, Michigan, 48911, the cabaret license revocation and liquor license revocation, and that is with the correction of the hearing set for March 25th, 2025, at 1:00 PM, at the City Clerk's 9th floor conference room.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. All right. We are on to closed session. Vice President Carter.
Yes. So I motion for closed session pursuant of, or pursuant to the MCL 15.268 of the Open Meetings Act, City Council, oh, C, excuse me, of the Open Meetings Act. City Council will hereby recess into closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lansing and Teamsters Local 243 Supervisory and CTP Units as requested by the city. This closed session would also include Director Elizabeth O'Leary and Dennis Parker.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Yes. Councilman, Councilmember Pelle Vanaglu.
One brief question. Thank you. As we move into closed session, will our internal auditor be joining us for any, any reason at all? I know typically we have OCA at times, other individuals do join us in closed session. Thank you.
We can, we can include him.
All right.
Okay.
This will also include our city auditor, Charles Randall.
Okay. Clerk Boak, can you do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Cost?
Yes.
Councilmember Pelle Vanaglu?
Yes.
Eight members.
All right. We're going to reconvene. Let the record reflect, we're reconvening at 6:30 PM. We're going to move on to item E. Vice President Carter.
Move the resolution for ratification of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, CBA, between the City of Lansing and Teamsters Local 243 Clerical, Clerical, Technical and Professional Unit, period, covering February 1st, 2025, through January 31st, 2026.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. All right. Next, we are on to item F. Vice President Carter.
Yes. I'll move the resolution for the ratification of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, CBA, between the City of Lansing and Teamsters Local 243 Supervisory Unit, period, covering February 1st, 2025, through January 31st, 2026.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. All right. Next, we are on to six other items, which is G, outside board and commission updates from council members. Does anyone have an update from one of their outside boards or commissions that they can share with us tonight? Councilwoman Pelle Vanaglu.
Thank you. Just a few brief report outs. First of all, Tri-County Regional Planning Commission meeting was held on February 26. Unfortunately, I did miss that meeting due to illness, but I did bring the agenda and items that were discussed. There were some reports on the transportation program regarding CADA and MDOT, targets for both CADA in this next, in this year of 2025, as well as MDOT's agreements and targets with ETRAN and Clans, excuse me, Clinton Transit. There was also an update on the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan and a discussion on the fiscal years 2026 through 2029 TIP development. If there were any other council members who are here that did attend that meeting, I would welcome any more thorough updates, but those are some of the items that were discussed at that meeting. Tri-County Office on Aging, I do not have an updated report. We have not met since the last report out, but we do have an upcoming meeting on March 17th. And lastly, Capital Area Michigan Works. Did want to inform council and our residents, Vice President Carter and I attended a special meeting that was called by Capital Area Michigan Works, and this was to discuss funding for this year, 2025. Every year, beginning July 1st, they put out a request for proposal to work with their, a variety of contractors and folks who help them carry out their mission of CAMW. So I'm just going to briefly cover some points that were touched on by Kerry, who is, of course, the Executive Director of Capital Area Michigan Works, and it reads, "Based on current estimates and planning figures for the upcoming program year, starting July 1st, 2025, a request for proposal for workforce services is being issued to guide decisions for the program year beginning July 1st. While we cannot say with certainly, certainty exactly what service delivery will look like after July 1, we know that we will not be able to provide full-time services in our current form in St. John's and Charlotte, which does affect the Eaton and Clinton County communities. We do not anticipate changes to the hours and days of operation in the Lansing American Job Center for the program year starting July 1st." And again, this is based on federal funding projections. funding projections that have been received by this organization, and it's just something for us to keep in mind as council members, as we work in these outside committees and with various commissions and agencies, that we may expect to have more of these conversations moving forward throughout this year. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Councilman Spatafor.
Councilwoman Pelley Von Aglou touched on the planning commission. I will touch on the airport real quick, four things. An owner's rep was selected for, after an RFQ went off on owner's rep services for the terminal renovation project, as many of you know, we received an $8.1 million grant for design for a new terminal renovation. That does not mean the terminal is being renovated, just design work being done on that. We're celebrating our 15th year of international flights with Apple Vacations, wrapping that season up now, looking at the 2026 season. Two EV chargers with a total of four spots have been installed in a short-term parking lot, giving customers and passengers a flight opportunity to charge while they're traveling. They are in the Blink Network, which syncs with the network the city selected, so it's a nice synergies there. And where operations, obviously, have impacted service a little bit, we're halfway through average snowfall for the season, and we see maintenance crews working around the clock in 12-hour shifts to keep the runways and airport open and safe and operational. They have seen some operational impacts, but are working with our airline partners to mitigate the impact on travel. So that's that, and then DLI meets this week.
Councilman Spatafor. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Cost. Councilwoman Pelley Von Aglou, you talked about the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. Are they currently, have they been implementing, they did a housing dive study for the Michigan Avenue, and I've been getting questions from constituents of how that's being implemented in the new construction, the lane decreasing in the walkable community. Have they talked about how they're using that study to implement change in that region?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I have not seen a detailed report on that, and again, my apologies, because I did miss the most recent meeting. It was not covered fully in the first meeting of the year, but I can certainly look into that and make sure that if there is a report or a strategy there, that I can certainly share that.
Okay.
Councilman Hussein.
I wasn't able to attend that meeting. You did a great job, by the way, for not being there. I was at the meeting, it was not discussed.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not saying it's at that meeting.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think this year it's been discussed.
Oh, okay, got you.
And you were, I believe, part of the committee last year, so you probably have the same information we have. But what we can do is, is obviously request additional information.
Yes, because it was a year, about a year-long process. They were meeting with Eastside Neighborhood Organization and different groups, and presenting and getting surveys and input. And then now we've seen some change, but really, how was that utilized? Because it was a very exhaustive study, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 6:37.